The current today is, uh, thank you guys for your grace, for your mercy, for your forgiveness, for your protection, for your guidance, peace, and for your unveiling love for being my savior. This is a, this is a both day of live, live streaming and reporting to you. Item number one.
On January 9th, 2025, I approved a supplemental from the juvenile court in their care and custody fund to establish the appropriations requested in their 2025 budget submission in order to finish processing payroll. On January 13th, I approved hiring Natius Samardj for the Department on Aging to the position of full-time recreation and education assistant to be effective February 3rd, 2025, at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. I also approved an unpaid personal leave of absence for the Department on Aging for Amber Zeigsmore, a transportation driver, for 32 hours, four days during the period, January 21st through January 24th, 2025. This will extend her probationary period by 32 hours. For job and family services, I acknowledge the following new hire appointment as the Executive Director of Job and Family Services, compliant with the Board of Commissioners's recruitment and hiring procedures for Amy Tressler, Social Services Worker Two Replacement, effective December 9th, 2024.
Thank you. Item number three, the question before approval, excuse me, minutes, October 17th, 2024. Second.
Sir.
Just a little.
Right.
Yes, sir. You should.
That's me.
Maybe we should.
Yes. Financials. Morning.
I'm one of them.
Can I just make a request because we're, we are streaming if people could, when they come forward, introduce themselves and say their position and department, just so that's watching.
Sure. Sure. Um, I'm Adrian Gordon. I'm with the Commissioner's Office. I am the Budget Finance Manager. So, well.
Check and see if it gives me.
Is there supposed to be a light on? Okay, today's financials include a supplemental appropriations from the Auditor's Office and the Harpo Fund to establish the funds to cover remaining projects. Among the cash transfers is one from the General Fund of Public Assistance for our January through March 2025 mandated chair. And there's a, I did add another one, um, that's not on your list there. I got a communication from Gina Hofstadter over community development that their operating fund was, was a little short on cash. So, um, I moved up the, um, the first quarter 2025 operational commitment um, to get them the cash that they need to, to meet their upcoming allegations. Um, I had given them about 15,000 extra dollars towards the end of last year, thinking that that was gonna hold them over, but uh, maybe it's gotten there. Uh, some expenses that I hadn't anticipated, so.
Okay, do we know what those expenses are? Why, why?
I, I don't know. I can look into it and see, but um, looking back, uh, it looks like there were a couple of things towards the end of last year, maybe that I hadn't anticipated, but um, they're gonna be making it up. They did pull down some money from their block grants for administrative expenses. I just haven't had the opportunity to transfer those yet. So, once, once that happens, then I'll be pretty much back on track. On the encumbrances or travel requests from the Commissioner's Office, for member training for Commissioner Brinkley, from the Engineers' Office, for the Professional Land Surveyors of Ohio Annual Conference, and the 2025 Ohio County Engineers Conference, and from Juvenile Court for the 2025 Inter-Court Conference, and from the Probate Court for accommodations for Judge Grindell to attend the Ohio Supreme Court oral arguments regarding the judge's disciplinary council case number 2024-0409. There are then annals from the County Police Court to Family Pride for therapeutic behavioral services, and from the Planning Commission for a NOB acrobat software that was not previously covered. Among the vouchers is 215,906.90 from the Auditor's Office Harpo Fund to Agro Sludge Incorporated for the Aquila Waste Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project, and 128,823 from maintenance. The value for a truck for a 2024 Ford F-550 dump truck replacement vehicle that had actually been ordered all the way back in May of 2023, and it's finally come in.
Oh, my gosh.
Finally, there are revenue certifications from the Commissioners and the Phase Two Capital Reserve Fund, and from Common Police Court in their Drug Court Fund, and from Community Development in their demo and site revitalization, ground field remediation, and block grant funds for unbudgeted revenue to receive in 2025.
So, I thought, I mean, the thing that stood out to me with, um, the financials was a request from the Probate Court. Uh, those travel expenses to attend oral arguments regarding the judge's disciplinary case. So, I mean, it's a relatively minor expense, almost $464, but I consider that personal expense for taxpayer, she, children. I don't know if the Commissioner was quite another.
I think you should look at what the financials were when everybody else was driving down to, uh, to go and testify, hotel rooms, and probably upwards to close to how much Adrian, almost quarter million dollars? Um, no, not, not just for that. I mean, it was probably several thousand dollars to accommodate everybody that went down and everything. And overall, I mean, over the entire, um, money that we've spent for, um.
Deal expenses.
For, yeah, um, special counsel. So, I mean, there have been a lot of expenses, not necessarily just travel expenses.
Correct.
That's everything.
But those are for, for our employees to, to testify regarding them acting in their official functions.
So, who were those, who were those expenses for? Um, the, the ones that you were, no, right, no. Oh, this is for Judge Grindell. It's $464, like Commissioner Brinkley said, for just the hotel accommodations for food, um, I think mileage and hotel.
And that's the other.
Yeah. I mean, I think that there's, you know, that I think this is gonna be one of those situations, like we discussed last week. I think that at the end of the day, if you guys wanna deny the, the, the charge, deny it, but I think that somebody else other than us is gonna end up deciding who should be paying this, and I'm, you're waiting.
You can wait.
If, if that's what you guys wanna do and deny it, then you can deny it, but if he's ordered to go down there, and I think we have to have a clear dis, you know, decision of is he technically a county employee that's going down there or supplying money for everybody else? And, you know, I think that this is prob, probably a little bit different than the, the legal costs as far as transportation. No, we, and you will see what some of these costs incur, legal or traveling costs are a lot between seminars, schools, this, that, and the other thing, so.
But Commissioner Spurrier, why do you feel this is different than the legal expenses?
I mean, if he was mandated in order to be there to, to have to go down there, then, you know, it's, it's, it's expenses. Once again, I, I think that we've had, don't have a really true, clear picture, you know, as far as legal counsel said, we can't cover it, we can, or, or we don't. But I think that nobody wants to hang their head on this problem until it's litigated. And at that point in time, if we're, we're gonna pay it, I guess we're gonna pay it. If we don't pay him now, we pay him later. My fear is that when we go to do this down the road, do we end up, you know, taking on a bunch of additional costs that we don't, that we don't do, you know, so I, I don't know. I mean, it's a, this is a slippery slope, either way you look at it.
I mean, to me, it's not that slippery. The law is pretty clear. And I mean, I don't care if it's $464 or if it's $30,000, we need to be, um, watched on, on our budget and, and look out for taxpayer. And to me, I mean, this is a personal expense, just as if somebody put their, their spring break trip.
So, do you wanna table this, so you have them come in maybe and discuss it a little further with us?
I mean, my, my recommendation is that we approve, uh, so I'll, I'll note to approve the financials except for, uh, the travel requests from the Probate Court.
Oh, I'll second that.
Mr. Spurrier.
Right.
Mr. Brinkley.
Hi.
Mr. Brinkley.
Yes.
And Christine, how do we?
You want to strike that on the financials and then have them sign that by the strike? Yes.
Should I do this back to you here?
Oh, yeah.
And then should we initial where it's, right?
Yeah.
We've four minutes here, we'll never try to.
Okay.
So, wherever we are in the agenda, we'll say.
Actually, the, the, the Probate Court one was one that I had to manually add, so it's actually not even on there, so. So, we don't have to, we don't have to, we don't have to actually make that motion. We can just pass it the way that it is. So.
And sign it how it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to amend the motion? No, it is, they still voted to start it.
Yeah.
It's understood.
But it, it was on this paper.
It is on there. I didn't manually add that because, um, there were issues that the Auditor's Office had with it, and it hadn't been approved yet by the Probate Court, so.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that this is definitely.
It is different. I apologize.
No, that's, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to.
Moving on, that's, that's, okay.
So, the next item is the Commissioner's Office's requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the President of the Board to execute revised accounting and payroll authorization forms for the Department on Aging, Building Department Commissioners, Community and Economic Development, Dog Warden, Emergency Services, and Maintenance. This is to get, uh, the one that added on as acting county administrator.
So, I'll make the motion to your approval.
I mean, oh, can you change?
Sir.
Mr. Brinkley. I.
Yes.
And then, uh, number six is the Commissioner's Office's requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number 15 for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Chelie County Warehouse Expansion, GMP Phase Number One, Phase Number Two, expenses in the amount of $1,051,465.26. So, this puts the project at about, uh, a third of the way through. Uh, we're just a hair over 20 million in the total value of the Infinity, um, contract, so, um, we'll, we'll speed ahead. You approved a revenue certification for the $10 million that will be, uh, transferring here soon into the Phase Two Capital Reserve Fund, so that we can, uh, fully encumber the Infinity contract.
A moment.
Mr. Spurrier.
Right.
Mr. Brinkley.
Yes.
Okay. This court, you have to move to um, pending number 12 on the agenda. This is probably, here you go, but. I'm on the show, Dr. Southern Water, Director in the air.
Do I need to swear? In the way?
Well, if they have a motion to weigh the review of the legal papers.
Come on. Sir.
Mr. Spurrier.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, anyone offering testimony or otherwise speaking and swearing, if you could please stand and raise your right hand. Swear.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
But it's just you? Did you stand as well? Okay. Um, do you swear to testify truthfully in this manner under penalty of?
Yes, it is. This, she just can be as a quick summary of the changes. Uh, can I ask you, please perform the red line, please?
Uh, I didn't. Well, I have to say, I was very impressed by it. I, I thought, like, these were the kind of changes that I make when I look at it. I, I was just like, well, just, just like, first things, changing my IDs, EJ, I would like. But so, well done, review your buyer's app, all the staff you got. Yes, I know he had talked to you. I thought, I thought you'd be. They were very good changers. I can tell you guys a lot of.
Thank you very much. All right, so, um, I guess I'll give you a quick summary of what those changes are. Um, just a little background, if you bring it up to speed, I mean, just never repeat. County regulations, these are Javik County Commissioner Regulations. Um, Javik County wasn't the first county in the state to actually have ground regulations. We started in 1979. And since then, they've been frequently updated. Um, when the passage of the EPA's Phase Two program came underway, one of the requirements were you had to have the common regulations to adopt for stormwater management and erosion study control. Well, we were way ahead of the curve because we had done it in '73 or '79, and did those EPA requirements in place in 2003. So, as each, uh, every five-year permit term with the EPA, when they update their rules with the construction general permit, we have to make sure our regulations are updated quite, um, so ours are due, be updated. So, one of the items were real simple one, they universally changed at the EPA that stormwater was changed to one word instead of two words. That was the change, but it's all over the red document, so, that item. Uh, we clarified the inputability categories, so we added a category for construction sites less than an acre, whether it's subjectable, as well as clarifying that there are multiple lots from a common sale or development that they must submit a full WMSC to, to match the EPA permit. We had a catch-all, um, to kind of cover when the EPA does make a change, in case our regulations have not been updated yet, that if, uh, WMSC plan is required to be submitted, that any of requirements of the latest version of the construction general permit would apply and supersede. So, we cannot have ourselves covered in case we don't have them updated at the same time or in a timely fashion. So, that was a good way to cover a catch-all. Um, post-construction requirement that a residential lot that disturbs over an acre but less than two acres, they have a small stormwater requirement to prove that they're not, they're allowing stormwater runoff from their house to not be connected to stormwater. They let it go off through the grass and infiltrate into the ground. Um, change in our plan review, uh, inspection fee structures. Um, we changed residential from 60 to 80. These haven't been changed in ten years. So, um, slight increases in a different structure to account for the amount of disturbance on a property. The more disturbance there is, the more work it is that we put in to, uh, do review and inspection of the properties. Um, filter sock, we just need to put in a standard of performance if you're gonna use that, set of silk fence. And then, after NOB is issued, we have problems with those violations. People just don't take things seriously when they're told that you're not doing something right. So, um, talking with some other counties and some things that are getting enacted, that we can at least follow the ORC that allows us to have these regulations, we can charge for inspection fees. So, if the NOB is issued and we are required to do subsequent inspections, those inspections will be charged a hundred dollar fee. Um, if it's residential and that's not residential, we need a $250 free inspection fee until they are out of a notice violation. Just kind of a little incentive, get it taken care of. You get a notice violation from us, you get it taken care of. By the time you go out inspection, you don't get charged. Um, Martin, expediting their compliance. And, um, the last item is if construction site has two months after completion, he gets their final documentation, which usually consists of the Ozville and the long-term maintenance and especially the grants. So, we're not waiting months, months after the project's completed. That's a quick summary of major changes. As well as the grammatical corrections.
Any questions? I hear silence, so.
Sorry. Yeah, we're just, we're put on yours, um, you've referenced, I think it was NOB, is that correct? Notice the violation. Okay.
We'll close the, uh, public. Thank you, thank you. Item number eight.
Yeah.
Seven. How many points? All right.
That is. The number four is requesting the Board to establish an auto credit application and necessary documents. John, for the reasons we're using first with O C 30132, but they were pressing, they're pressing $6,000, three twelve, twelve cards. If the change, uh, Judge Brinkley coming in, um, they have to reapply and change our credit cards holders. This is just for that application to, to get that in the process.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Mr. Spurrier.
Right.
Mr. Brinkley.
Hi.
Yes. Item number eight.
Was there any justification, um, given for why they needed this, uh, increased credit line?
They may wanna be in compliance, so, uh, because of the change in this policy, that the change in the policy was it could be up to $20,000. Will they still be in compliance if they had a lower?
Sure.
Okay. So, they're, they're just asking for it just in case, I'm assuming?
Okay.
I mean, nobody talked to me about it, so.
Yeah, but I'm just looking, like, the Common Please has a $6,000 line. Why does juvenile probate pay for $20,000?
Well, I don't know, because there may be cases where they need to send a child someplace or to wait for transport. I can't see them or to.
Right. Um, okay, I moved the table back.
Check it.
Mr. Spurrier, thank you.
Hi.
Yes.
Shane Djar with the Javik County Engineers' Office, Deputy Attorney for Engineering. Order. Item number nine, County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute unit price contract with Moniac Paving Incorporated, the asphalt resurfacing various roads in Clay Street, County Highway 37, sections E through F, Leggett Road, County Highway 33, section N, Huntsburg and Myfield Townships, in the amount of $1,026,000.
Okay.
Mr. Spurrier.
Thank you.
Mr. Brinkley.
Hi.
Mr. Brinkley.
Yes. Thank you.
Boarding Chief Rowan, Sheriff's Office.
Right.
Item number 10, we're requesting the Board to approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute another day. Item number ten, we're requesting the board to move and authorize the president of the board to execute another parent's health solution incorporated pursuant to section five of the professional service agreement provided, writing thirty-day notice of termination uh, if it's affected, that's where it is.
The arrangement just wasn't working out?
Right, it, it had to do with the medical billing and being to go between, between all the medical bills and verifying everything, it just didn't work to our satisfaction, save us money like it was possible.
Okay, now it looks like you can terminate us with thirty days notice without, um...
Yes, and the commissioner signed the original contract, they asked a couple of things.
Very good. So, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes. Thank you. Well, I want to... Morning.
Howling Sharp, the Javik County water management services. To request the board issue a finding of violation against Harold and Dunga Corvus regarding the construction activities occurring at one seven three nine five Crescent Bridge in Bainbridge Township, parcel number zero two four two one five four four, for failure to comply with Javik County Water Management and Subment Control Regulations, section seven point oh three, seven point one five, to prevent sediment from leaving the property as identified in the first and second notices of violation, just indicating the inspection reports forward the binding violation to the Javik County prosecutor for further action is necessary to secure required...
It seems like you guys worked diligently to try to find solutions, the, uh, prior to this, that, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I rarely meet people, people usually tend to warm after a while, but, I mean, I've been talking with him, emailing him, he wants to do it, he's, keeps something in love, the excavator, but I don't know what to say to you, and I told him this was going to happen, so.
Okay. Um, so I'll move to approve, eleven.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, brother. Morning. Morning. Roger Petersen, Department of Emergency Services Director, uh, number thirteen. Uh, annually, we have to have, uh, a current emergency response plan for already the collection emergencies of period of the current life. Uh, I'm reviewing the plan, we're going to do metal changes, right, to the bendings from the previous year, fire departments, schools, especially homes, health care, law enforcement, the substate, same. Operations are all the same, so it's, it's, I have to endure two years' college, they have to send a matter of general regulations to the state, so you can get the files. There you go. So, move.
Thanks.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Master Accu-Maidens Department, Councilor Coordinator. All right, I've got fourteen through twenties today. Uh, the first one, after talking with the prosecutor's office about the contract I was working on for the, uh, H B A C maintenance, that's a motion, kind of line up a little better with what's in the contract. What we wanted to do was break it up into separate categories, so we know exactly what's being paid and what is the alternate. Uh, so, the maintenance says, maintenance department is requesting the board amend the motion from December twenty, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to adjust the language to, to award the bid to Air Force One Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight Hill H B A C maintenance services for the bid amount of eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars for maintenance services and to authorize the payment of a separate amount up to a sum which shall not exceed sixty-five thousand dollars for any H B A C repair work which may be needed during the term of the contract, as the labor rates provided in the quote sheet as they were presented below this note.
So, were these, the amounts grouped together previously and then you're splitting them out, what, what's the change from what we're showing?
So, originally, the board, I believe, if I remember correctly, it was just one lump sum.
Okay, all right, that's what I, I thought you were saying, but, and you said, all right, so I'll move to approve fourteen.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Great.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
All right, uh, number fifteen, I've been working on this since I started almost two years ago. Uh, so, we are requesting fourth grade permission to advertise for beds. Department of Emergency Services, Clarick Tower, say generator upgrade project, uh, to be held on Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at two P M. Notices of this opening will be advertised on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and on the county website.
So, move.
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Yes.
Congratulations, that's, that's a big accomplishment, right?
Yes.
How long will it take to get the January?
The lead time is about a year.
A year.
So, it's not over yet. Uh, number sixteen, we're requesting the board approve and execute the agreement with the Giada Mechanical Company to place the hanging heater located in the main garage as shares post due station effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, with work to be completed within sixty days, an amount of seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, seventeen, we're requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with county-wise replacement windows incorporated to provide window and glass repair services as needed at various county locations per the director for a two-year period effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Right.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Yes.
Uh, number eighteen, we're requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Giada Mechanical Company to provide as needed H B A C repairs at various county locations per the director for a two-year period effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Move. Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Uh, number nineteen, this is mainly to place that fire escape, the annex, um, it's, I would not, I would rather stay in the building if it was on fire, because they got that fire escape. Uh, so, we're being a little help to get that in place. So, we are requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Questle Welding LLC to provide welding services at various county locations per the director for a two-year period effective January fourteenth, in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, is it, is it various county locations or just the one stairwell?
So, I did a service contract so that he can, uh, work in other county locations as well. The stairwell replacement, it's not twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, that's what I was going to add.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot.
No, I believe it was three or four thousand to take in the repair work. But this way, I can call them out, it would be something else, and another.
Perfect, yeah, that'd be fun, so I'll move to approve nineteen.
Second.
I have a question.
This one?
Um, does this include inspection of all the other stairwells, you know, metal stairwells?
It can, fire, I just had them look for one, but I could have them come out and look at it as well.
Thank you, and my vote is yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
And the last one, we're requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement, area within larger company to perform all area maintenance and services at various county locations per the director for a two-year period, effective January thirty-first, in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Right.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning. Nick Larsen, Department of Water Resources Director and Cemetery Engineer. Item twenty-one on the agenda, Department of Water Resources is requesting the board tentatively award the bid to Shook Construction Company for the Van Farland Creek wastewater treatment plant improvement project in the amount of thirty million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, as they represented the lowest and best bid for the project, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Uh, I just want to clarify the tentative award, it seems, uh, uh, odd that we say tentative, but as part of the EPA loan agreement, uh, on one hand, they won't issue an award for the loan, if we don't have an award for a project, we can't really afford a project, if we don't have the money, so the tentative is decided in place so that we can move forward, this will then get issued to the EPA, the EPA will act on, uh, this, I think, at the February meeting, so, uh, and then we'll move forward with the process.
And I talked to the prosecutor's office as well, because I saw the, um, what's the name of this company? Shook?
Shook.
Shook Construction, you know, they indicated that they had, uh, they were referring to litigation without, um, much less explanation, so I talked to the prosecutor's office about that, maybe it was, it was minor, it was an issue in Cincinnati involving a non-party to a contract for twenty thousand dollars. So, they, they thought that was minor, and then I also talked to the, uh, the prosecutor's office as well regarding, um, the, the slight errors in their submission, and, and you communicated to me the same thing, that those are, um, immaterial.
No, not immaterial, substantial, so.
Yeah, okay.
Susan, do you want to come to the prosecutor's office this year, say two?
Oh, yeah, great, great. Oh, hi, Susan, does you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay.
We reviewed the bids and I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it, being here.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes. Thank you very much.
It doesn't look like we have a representative from the Department of Job and Family Services. They are requesting the board reappoint following members to serve on the family services planning committee for a one-year term, January one, twenty twenty-five, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, including Jessica Bolt, Vicky Clark, Julie Florence, Scott Hildenbrand, Tim Eras, Jennifer Felker, alternate Nancy Santilli, Christine Frankenberry, Terry Molnar, Andrea Pollak, and Angela Spalsbury.
Do you know if those openings were advertised at all?
I do not know how Job and Family Services figures out who's going to be on your committees, do you want me to find out and let you know?
Um, you know, I just, we've, we've got bigger issues in some ways, but I am, you know, I'm always concerned with these reappointments that were, we're advertising it, we have a transparent process, if people want to apply, they can apply, if that's an option. Um, I don't want to just, you know, rubber stamp the same people every year, I want to give some fresh girl an opportunity to apply.
I think with this group, each person represents a segment of the, uh, Jennifer Felker, she's educational, from Lake Jago Educational Center.
But some of these people, I think, are just community members as well, and, and it's a bit wrong.
Andrea Pollak, she's next up, Andrew Solder is the dean of, uh, this thing, so it's, 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 it's a realm of, they represent, Vicky Clark. Maybe, right? So, it's, it's a quarterly meeting. So.
It may be that certain elements of the population need to be represented by members on the committee, I'll write it out and take back to you on that if you want.
When do they need, um, this decision?
I'm assuming they need it now, since they're asking for it now?
It was said last year, there was need of this helping, that be there.
Okay.
So, it's up to you, but I do like the table.
Um... Yeah, I mean, if they don't, if this doesn't need to be done today, they're not going to move to table.
Second.
I assume they'll then want a table number twenty-three as well.
Yeah, I mean, I just want a little bit of, you know, background for these appointments, like, what, you know, we didn't, I don't think we saw a resume, you know, we didn't see anything, so.
Typically, um, for the Department of Job and Family Services is a kind of a hybrid sort of an agency, because it's a state agency, but it's also a county agency, and I don't know that they may have autonomy about this, I'll find out.
Yeah, okay.
And I wish Craig was here as well.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, I think I explained it a little bit.
Okay, so we will, do you want to, um, table twenty-two, twenty-three, just past, since they're the same?
Yeah, that sounds great, okay.
So, we had a motion to...
Well, wait, no, we don't have to table twenty-three, because that's just reporting a certain board, it's the same unit, oh, it's the same committee, yes.
Represent. That's, you know, that's a fallback, I mean, each person is representing something.
Yes.
At a quarterly meeting, so their staff and Craig gives a report to these people that resonates through the whole community.
Uh, I believe this statute court, free, uh, three twenty-nine oh six is the, uh, applies to a double that committee.
Okay. But, I mean, I would think we still have discretion on relief, but... I mean, I would think if we're approving it, we have some sort of say in the process.
We'll find out.
Okay.
Okay, so then, it's one to table twenty-two, twenty-three, to table, so...
Uh, yeah, twenty-two, thirty, twenty-four, great.
Um, two, well, number twenty-four is a different one, there's a different committee, it's a state, it's a state, maybe. Um, I would just want to offer the options, twenty, okay, so I'm going to table twenty-two or twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Stiller?
Right.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yes. Item twenty-five.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board, when Mark Leescheck is on County Ape There's for the year twenty twenty-five, and for the next few weeks, John from the Bible County Department of Culture, they're committed for County Ape There's, our trip forms to be effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, an hourly rate of thirteen dollars per hour, and a management reversal rate of point zero seven, zero cents per mile, which can see in higher scale.
So, I think it's, it should be seventy cents per mile, right?
Or is it, it's zero point seven two, seventy cents per...
Okay, okay, but...
Do you only just put seventy cents, we didn't really bet the dollar?
Right, okay, right, because that's us.
Um, one question I do have for you that I was still in the other day was, the hourly rate has been at thirteen dollars an hour for the last seven years. I didn't know if people wanted to remain there at thirteen dollars an hour, or if you wanted to.
How many hours does it bill a year?
It's very minimal, the allocation is, is only a hundred dollars for the entire season.
Okay. I don't have a strong feeling.
We're actually going right for this position.
It's, it's...
All the APs, they sit together, and I don't...
They have a union.
Yeah, it's actually kind of hard to find an AP, I would think so, so, we just thought you might want to consider offering a little bit or not, that's your call.
Martha's new flash, too, she is in John County, and he was extremely excited about this last year, they're totally core, and he was excited to get going for twenty-five, so, um, when I was just hearing the paperwork, I just thought I would ask the question, what are you willing to do?
Mr. Stiller? Dollar, oh, dollars.
I, I don't have a strong feeling.
Anything about competition, sorry?
It doesn't matter, it's just hard to find, finding these, these people.
Yeah, I think so.
I made a motion to increase it one dollar. Now. A little...
They're going to do a possible release.
Yes.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Stiller?
Yeah.
E P A. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve the next year's resolution twenty-five dash zero zero eight, does it meet the official representative and alternate representative for the purpose of voting, having these, like, the County Commissioners Association, from Ohio into T two five? I have it on a revision as, um, for, as official voting representative, they, this person, I see, I mean, ultimate voter representative, if you wish to change that, let me know, and I can read the presentation.
That's fine, I'm paying.
I'm confident, perhaps. So, move.
Welcome.
Mr. Stiller?
Thank you.
Mr. Stiller?
Hi.
Mr. Spiller.
Yes.
Kristy really shouldn't bring number 27 because she spent all day yesterday working through that.
Just all day yesterday, right? That would have been a long project for you.
Yes.
So number 27, um, you initially approved, um, that you've upped our by resolution, um, last week at the organizational meeting, but not all of the department's heads or their information for their credit cards. So this resolution is, um, to amend it, um, and it includes a court of course this week. And some national changes regarding the courts, um, or the drug courts and probation department. So 27 is to bring the next year resolution in 25, dash 009, and then a resolution that brings in the current charge from 25, that you can see in card, which is personal, first, and to oversee 301.27.
You have a law?
I'll move to the room.
Say again.
Mr. Spiller.
Say again.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Spiller.
Yes.
And then number 28 is, um, is to then go ahead and approve the board to exit the application for the use of credit cards from the court of courts office for the next 25, 23, 27.
I'll move to approve 28.
Say again.
Mr. Spiller.
I.
Mr. Spiller.
Yes.
And then number 29, um, is the one that we literally finished at about, we're at the 9:00, it's more than we're going to have to court up with processing topics. We've had it through most of the day yesterday. Um, and this is the resolution of 25, dash year 10, authorizing the use of specific credit cards by designated employees or officers. Um, the John County Sheriff's Office, Office of the Board, Sheriff's Office, for the John County County Service Services, under the Department of Agent Global, for the expense of the absolutely not needed of the expenses to worry about, the sheriff's, any court is way past 231.27. Two, and this is for emergency or unwisdom, so we still have to use this.
I'm going to check this.
Say again.
Mr. Spiller.
Thank you.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Spiller.
Yeah. Which takes us to the high end of the board. Mr. Speller, question to the board. We may have actually discussed a conversation with public.
Can we just take, um, a public comment now? If you show there's anyone that wants to be public comment now, we don't have to say, I'm going to accept it.
That's fine.
Just my view.
Any public comment? Like everybody's standing. Now, oh, and exactly. Okay. I make that one.
Yeah. I'm Mr. Spiller.
Yeah, HR.
Thanks, Susan. It's nice to be here.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the revised job description for the position of county administrator number 1301 to be effective January 14th.
I think that we want to try to, um, to, to, to get this thing, you know.
To the finish line?
Yeah. And I, I know like the last time that I went through this with, um, with them, you know, it was, it was, it was a situation where it got, you know, kind of sticky at the point that they were finding it, the point of saying, you know, we're, we're trying to work you guys to just get this done and, um, you know, and there's always a carrot that's hanging out there for them to, um, having a lot of other competition to try to absorb them. But I think that we don't want to lose that asset here in our own backyard.
So I just need some direction from you and like going back to the airport authority to try to change this lease. Are we going to accept it as it is? All you do typically, and Christie will correct me if I'm wrong, is that we acknowledge things that the airport authority has done.
Oh, since I mean, I wasn't involved in this earlier, so I feel like I'm more deferential to the, the two of you gentlemen, but I mean, I, you know, as Commissioner Sporelli said, we're not parties to an agreement. I don't really understand why we didn't do it.
And, and both parties have to deal with what they have signed. When that side of the agreement.
We are not signing.
Well, technically you did. You signed as an acknowledgement on the initial document.
But again, another party.
And you know, this is a five-year agreement or is it a one-year agreement?
I believe it's, I'm sorry. Yeah, with an automatic renewal.
Okay. Oh, it's like an ever, evergreen clause. Yeah.
There is a place on where you would be signing the acknowledgement.
Yeah, but I mean, that just says we know this agreement exists.
Yeah.
That doesn't say we accept liability for anything out of the agreement.
Well, that doesn't mean you can't pursue. Because anybody will sue, as you know, for anything.
Yeah, they don't win now.
Well, then just, just, uh, let, let them finish their agreement themselves.
The biggest question they have is, is do we have the revised insurance as a hit because that must be staying for you right now too, because we still do not have a revised.
We also do not have three copies where you put signatures. So there's further steps, but if we're not going to address the things that came up from law, then hopefully we can get this to the finish line.
Okay.
The other issue for the.
Oh, just one second. It's a five-year agreement with an ex-agreement. Somebody asked that. Yes. I found that. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, the other thing has to do with the agreement for canable improvement funding between the Georgia County Airport Authority and the Georgia County Board of Commissioners. On December 17th, the board approved a motion to. Board of Commissioners. On December seventeenth, the board approved a motion to, let me see if I can play my language, approve encumbrance and expenditures for January twenty twenty five, one point three, three million construction of new teehanger facility and upgrades to existing facilities. That's what was approved. Um, Jerry did draft an agreement and, uh, sent it out. And once again, um, there were a lot of changes suggested. When it came back to us from our APA, there were significant changes. Um, and the explanation given was, um, the RAPA was referring back to the agreement that you have on the current teehanger, which was a twenty-year loan. The expectation of payback or what you've passed.
Yeah. And that was totally not the conversation or the motion that we made was basically to do the one point three, three, we had an understanding just so that if they can, you know, get to the point of running independently with the, uh, with the, with the right, and, and with that, with the match that was re, would be returned back to them for future projects that they've got a whole, you know, five-year plan of, uh, items on the table. So, and that was pretty, that was pretty clear. Um, there was, I don't think that there was any mince of words of, well, you know, the three commissioners agreed to was to basically do that, no different than what we did with the, with the, uh, Georgia County Fair, Fair Board, moving to, you know, to, to do that for their building.
I feel that the agreement that was drafted by Jerry encapsulated exactly that what we discussed and what you agreed to and what you voted on. And then this thing, the, the agreement that came back from Laura was quite different. So I need a direction from you about, do we just go back and say, this is what the board wants to do? Can, if you agree just to form?
I know this. I mean, I, I, we, we spent a lot of time with, with, with Jerry and with, um, you know, with their, with their board to get this specifically to what we agreed to. And I just, um, you know, I, I think that there's, you know, we have that board in place to be able to manage the airport and they've done an incredible job and have proven that time and time again. You know, and I, I just think that this was, you know, A, the most, um, you know, the most, uh, sensible position to go with, give them the dollars to make those changes. And in addition to that, it gives them the ability of having for them to forecast and be able to make future, future.
This is a copy of the agreement that Jerry, that he would pass. If you guys read it and see anything that you think needs to change. You're happy with it as it is.
I, yeah, I mean, I could make the original, you know, agreement. So it's, it's hard for me to, to weigh in a bit, but it does seem like the changes that were made by the APA are to protect the commissioners and to make the airport accountable for how they spend or do not spend them, which to me seems like it's a better protection of the taxpayers than what was originally on the paper. But I mean, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Sporelli. You don't feel that this encapsulates the agreement that was.
Yeah, it doesn't. I mean, it totally turned it being created. It totally pretty much did, you know, completely what we really didn't, what we didn't discuss and, uh, in agreement and, you know.
And one point one one just provides some accountability where it says the authority, and again, places to draft. The authority shall provide the commissioners an annual summary outlining the usage of money with invoices, pay requests, um, until such time as the funds are depleted and noted, which must be added to the tuition. So that would be something where they would actually have to come and report to you about how the money's being used. So it's not entirely without some accountability.
And that, that was always agreed upon that they would keep a stone or five was going on.
You know, and the other thing too is, is I, you know, I, you know, always kind of been that, you know, um, I don't know if you would say liaison, you know, person, but, um, I, I just, I spend a lot of time to work with them, you know, throughout this project and, and other projects that have happened. And, you know, and I'm not planning on not having that oversight with them to, 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 to be able to do that. And I think that, you know, I appreciate what the, you know, what the, what the board had done in, in allowing me to, you know, kind of come up with the, with, with, with the, with the board to be able to present a plan and, and a more, you know, forward motion to get them some funding and, and, you know, they're constantly um, having to be in a position that we can't look at other projects. And I think that this was, this was one of the biggest things. And I think that, you know, doing the work, it probably would say the same thing. It was just a cleanup point of us being able to get this done. You know, but I, I just, um, they, 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 they're, they're, they're very frugal almost to a fault of what they, you know, what they do. And the other thing is, is that when they do stuff down there, the, the other watch, watch guard on this is the FAA because nothing is, is done of their improvements that does not have to go through the approval process through the FAA also. So that's, you know, that's another big thing. And, you know, they've got, put it this way, they've got projects that far exceed what they're, what they've, just to maintain what they've got of the money that they would be getting back. So it's not like they were given such an amount that they're going to be, uh, you know, having, uh, you know, where they're going to be, you know, in, uh, pearl seats for their.
But I mean, they could based on the agreement because it's, I mean, I, I thought the intention was for this, this hanger project, but it's the way the agreement is written. It's for the hanger and then whatever else they want. That's how it's written.
So the hanger project, but then what they do is, is they, then the FAA has a match that they give them, that they give them back. And then that, the, the dollars.
What do you mean they give them back?
So there's going to be a, what was the number? Like almost five sixty-five or something around there? So the, so we forward that money, we put the one point three with.
Three, 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 three.
And then they give them back, uh, like five hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that project gets returned back to them.
So, and so they kind of get like one point eight, or we get, we get some of the check.
So our initial investment of capital improvements was going to be a one point three, no different than what kind of what we did with the Fair Board. We gave them the seven fifty to, to be able to build their project. We gave the airport, we did a capital improvement investment to one point three. That was what the hangars were going to cost and we paid in full. The caveat of that is, is that they're going to be, there's going to be a return from the FAA to them in, that's going to be about five hundred and sixty-five thousand, that five sixty-five. Instead of that coming back to us, what we basically looked at is we committed to the hanger project that return of those funds were going to be redeposited within the airport for their future projects of what they're, of what they do. And the other big thing is a lot of the projects that they're doing, they basically have, you know, five to fifteen percent of what their matches are in most of those projects that they could get a lot of those other little things done with that much.
Yeah, with the grant line. When they do get the grant line, you want to keep it.
Exactly.
And have other repairs.
Yep.
On that property.
Right. Exactly. That's exactly what it, that's exactly it.
That's what we agreed upon.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, but they're end up, like, at the end of the day, they're getting like one point eight. We disagree.
Well.
Right.
Yeah, cause they, they.
I guess if you look at, if you look at it in the sense of like the money going out and then the money coming back. But in reality, they're getting five sixty-five because the one point three is paying for the hanger project. Five hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is the, the, the match that the FAA is doing on that of being returned. They never, what they do is they never put the money upfront. You always have to put the money upfront and then they do a repay. You know, they, they'll.
With their, with the airport's keeping it all.
Yeah.
That we're not getting repaid on.
Correct. No, that was a distribution to them for capital improvements for, for the hanger and for the future projects.
So I mean, if some of these red lines are not consistent with what the commissioners want, I understand that and what was agreed to. But I mean, some of these changes I think are very good prudent changes that protect the taxpayers. Like, you know, for example, if I'm just looking at the first one, this purpose, and then the original agreement is open-ended as far as how the airport can spend this money. And then the, the red line just changes this, uh, such as to consisting of, consisting of being closed language. So you couldn't add anything to that list. So to me, that's just protecting the, the taxpayers. You know, you're not putting in gold in trash cans or whatever. Um, so I, I'm not, I understand what you're saying as far as some of these changes maybe are not consistent with, um, you know, the gentleman's handshake agreement that went on, but I, I think we should at least consider some of these things so that we are protecting the taxpayer money that's going to the airport because it's a significant assessment.
Do we want to ask for a motion of what you want to do? I mean, do we need to have a vote since we have?
I mean, I would, I, you know, based on our, based on our, um, you know, based on our, our meeting in December, based on the motion we took and based on the discussion that we had, I would make them, I would make a motion to keep it, you know, based on the agreement that we drew up here. That's, that's the original language that we had in the, in the, in the documents.
I mean, at the very least, the red lines correct some inconsistencies with, with this agreement. So I, I mean, there are, there are things, I mean, just as an attorney, I would have a lot of problems if at least some of these changes are not included. Even if you feel the substantive changes are unmarked.
I, I do understand what you're saying, but I think that we went back and forth with their legal counsel on this also, you know.
So this, I thought this was an initial draft. This is not an initial draft.
Correct. But we, we basically, there was the discussion with the board, with their attorneys and back with, you know, with, with our, our administrator. And then it was a situation where I go, this pretty much summarized what, you know, we took action on, you know, at our meeting for this. And, and I understand that there may be some things, my whole thing is I think that we can, we can make this thing so muddied up that it gives so many restrictions of, you know, and I understand the accountability, but I also understand the fact that if, if that's, if we can't trust the board that we have there to make good decisions, then maybe we just figure out the next move of abolishing the board. And then, you know, we just basically take on another set of responsibilities. And just do it ourselves because they do do a great job there. And they've got a very talented group with a lot of, a lot of knowledge and a lot of, um, you know, professional background to be able to make a lot of these decisions that I, I would, I would not want to try to go in a, in attack a lot of these things that they do. And the biggest thing is, is there, you know, there's no skin in the game for them other than improving our facility. And that's, I think, was one of the biggest things that we, you know, had the discussion with. And I know, I know, you know, Commissioner Devorek has talked to the board himself a number of times regarding this. And you've been to some of the meetings.
Yep.
You see the process. It's not just a cookie cutter, uh, you know, thing that they, they go through a lot of detail, but, um, I mean, is there something specifically that stands out there that you really, um, feel is, is, is an absolute red light to you there?
Yeah. I mean, that's like some of the things I just blacked and seeing. You know, like, like I said, for example, this one by one, like having it open ended that they could, they could put this, you know, two mil, or, you know, one point eight million dollars and do whatever they want versus the language that closed what projects they could do. I mean, those.
Yeah. But that's one, once again, I think that that was what we, I think, I think that that was, um, our, our goal was to not close it off to specific projects. And I think that was a situation where, where we allowed them to be able to make those decisions to, to, to run their, to run their airport. You know, I just, I think that it's, I think we're, we're, we're micromanaging that board by doing this. Um, by, by not, by not, you know, going along with what we did. And I think that, you know, are we still going to have accountability? Yes. And, and ultimately, I'm, you know, I feel like I'm very, very much engaged with their processes down there. Probably sometimes more than I, um, would like to be or should, but it's something that I, 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 I've found that very challenging to see the success story in that airport of what it was thirteen years ago and what it is today. And the fact that if you look at the, the, the direction that they're going to be going to with this additional dollars, I think, and that was, I think, what the three commissioners in December, you know, made that decision based on too, is that they are going to be truly at a point that they're going to be self-operating. And, and, and they've come to us with some of these bigger projects that they couldn't do, but a lot of the general stuff could be a.
So I guess the question for me is, are we going to stay with the original agreement? Are we going to try and take into account some of the things that were proposed by our APA? What would you like to do?
So this is the agreement that was for December meeting? The one that was just passed out?
Right.
No, this is the one that I got from the airport authority did not match the one that Jerry originally drafted. So I'm not, I'm not sure where you guys are, but my, my one question that I had was the one that they provided, um, so that they were going to handle all of the bidding process and that kind of stuff. I mean, when Mr. Huss was here in session, he said something about going out to bid through us. So I'm not sure where that part of the process on the hanger project.
How about this? How about, how about I get with, uh, how about I get with their board to have them come in? And then I'll, I'll sit down with them also. Would be kind of get, instead of trying to make a, uh, you know, decision today specifically on this, let me get with this, let me get with their, uh, let me get with their board so that I, I, I feel confident. And I think that, you know, Commissioner Devorek, you, you feel confident too, of what we did is, is you, you know, the direction that we went to in December. So I think the best thing to do is, is let me talk to, let me talk to them so that it doesn't, um, it doesn't have, you know, that there's no questions on, you know, that are on turn. And, and as far as with Commissioner Brackey with, with some of her concerns, I'll bring those up. And then we can have this discussion and, and, and then get to a, get to a point of happy meeting. But I will tell you, as far as us trying to micromanage those, those dollars to try and do that, I think it's a road that we just don't want to go down. I don't, I.
No, I'm not interested in micromanaging. I just want to make sure that the airport is accountable to the commissioners for how they're spending their money. And if they want to, if they want to do some like put a fountain in or whatever, they, they can do that with their money, but they shouldn't be doing that with taxpayer dollars. And so that's my concern is that, um, but I'm certainly not interested in micromanaging. And I just want to make sure there's protection in place for the taxpayers in this agreement.
Understood.
So Commissioner, maybe I can sit down with Commissioner Brackey, get a solid list of specific things she would like to see that we can divide in. And this is a copy of the lower version.
Yeah.
If you need the authority.
All right.
I don't know if their attorney should be there. Um, they seem reluctant to bring her in sometimes, and sometimes they just need to bring her in.
Okay.
You need to have that conversation.
Okay. As far as the bidding process, I agree it should come through here. That way it follows a prevailing wage law straight to Ohio. And, uh, it's the money generated from here. So bidding process should come from here.
Well, and one other thing I noticed on here that was, um, oh, nevermind, nevermind. We'll talk, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So maybe if you can, like, if you can, if you can get, if you can give it Linda specifically on some of your concerns. And then I'll try to sit down with Linda, sit down with the, their board members or a couple of their members and talk to them. And then we'll get to a, we'll get to a happy point.
Yeah. I mean, like in this agreement for, as written, they can just retain whatever part of that one point three, three million that they don't use. And they can, what I think, not.
Right.
Is that your understanding? They can just, they can use it for salary. They can use it for.
Uh, re agreements.
A dog.
Yeah, it can be used for salaries.
Well, but it's, I mean, it says, it prevents to retain any remaining portion.
Correct.
None of the one point three, three million from commissioners shall be used by the authority for salaries and benefits operational.
I was maybe looking at it as, where's that?
That was in the original version.
One point one zero.
Correct. No, yes. So there are some of those protections in there. We'll just go through it with a fine tooth comb.
Yeah.
Well, whatever seems good to you guys. And so back to that one too. Um, quickly, I need to know if you want additional security cameras on the building. We've been asked to have a couple of outside to point it working, I'm sorry, parking lots that do not currently have security camera coverage. It's nice to have for under vendors and what have you, if that's okay. And also the sheriff had suggested that we have a security camera here pointed towards, is that something? I see two people saying yes.
I, I would bear that because there's been a couple of vendor vendors.
I know.
Whereas the cameras like, oh, in that part of the fighting line, we don't have a cam.
Yeah. Yes. But the other issue has to do with our core Creston AV equipment. As you know, we've had a lot of frustrations with that. Um, and my understanding in an email exchange with Frank from ADP is that they are willing to take on responsibility. Um, and my understanding in an email exchange with Frank from ADP is that they are willing to take on responsibility for that. Is that something you want them to do?
Absolutely.
So is that a more expensive, Ralph? Cause there was like one, two and three.
So that, that's our existing cameras that you guys already paid for.
Right.
So that's just to see if they can get these systems up and running and keep them running and, and keep them running.
Do you think we'll pay for some training?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we've already paid our initial money to, for the hardware, I, I would think that that would be sensible.
And Mr. Antonucci is here, if he has anything to add to that.
No, I think that's correct. Uh, right now we have what we term the Band-Aid option here, which is functional and working um, in terms of taking over the Creston system. To Commissioner Brackey's point, I believe there will be training involved. We need to find out the configuration for it and then potentially rebuild how it is configured here. But the hardware appears to all be in place.
So this camera here is, is for, for, is this, um, projection unit or is this an actual camera?
We believe those are for live streaming this room. I don't know. I did not inspect them. That's what they appear to be. I've never seen them functional.
And the, and the, and as far as the control panel for those, where is that located at? Just, just not there.
It says camera controls on this little screen here.
Theoretically, this is a more complicated question and we realize.
Quite possibly, but that could be part of the control panel system, possibly.
Yeah.
Not yet, having seen it functional, I'm reluctant to go out and live.
I remember them the other day, but I cannot get them to.
Yes, I believe in the past, there were times when Jerry and I came in here, Jerry, you correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we get that to move one time?
Yes.
They all reach for it.
Yes. So theoretically, the controls here should, if everything is set up properly.
So what would be the, the, what would be the direction that this would go? You would contact Creston and try to start, start to figure out what the.
Well, it's going to be, I don't know that we can work directly with Creston, the manufacturer. Um, but if there is somebody who does the software, we would like to work with them on some training for that. Um, as we've stated in the past, this is a very high-level enterprise system. It's, if Cadillac is, is still high level, that, that's what this would be. Um, and I would be reluctant to just go in there and start pushing buttons without first ensuring that the techs are specifically trained on how to use this system. It's a complex enterprise level system. It's a very good system, but it also needs a high level of technical training on it.
And again, I, I really appreciate Frank being willing to take that on because we know the same equipment has been spec'd for the new courthouse pretty much. If you're aware of it being different, my understanding is that's what was spec'd for the courthouse.
I do not know either way. That is.
I've heard that that was still up in the air, although somebody, yeah, it seemed like it was initially chosen as Creston and then there was maybe some back and forth about what it may be. I'll find out. Um, well, yeah. It's a, it's a question worth asking. But certainly if they have that expertise in-house at A and P, then they can use it at the courthouse as well. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Um, so is this sufficient for you to move forward?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what you want.
You don't need a motion?
Not as long as we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. I, I think that that would only make sense.
Okay. Um, that's it. That's all I had.
That's it.
And that?
Thank you, Rondo.
Oh, like, wow.
Anything else?
No, we just, uh, what can we try to schedule a, um, John or someone's salary, so we, um, beginning of February, um, the date that was presented to me was the date that we're continuing, um, and the commission hearing. So I suggested some alternative dates.
Is that February eleventh?
No, it's February twenty-seventh, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth. I don't know. I mean, the end of the line, February twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth is the new commission hearing.
I thought it was generally what you said, eleven is still.
That we were looking at the eleven, which means twenty, that's alternative days that she was checking with trouble. They also have new commissioners as well, and she was not available training as it kind of went off. So, so Glenn does want to know where.
Okay.
Great.
Second?
I want to. You can decide all of those.
Yeah, just one who did this, why don't we just, why don't we try to get some of that information?
How much yourself?
I think we'll check, we might be able to see if it's going to be coming to. Okay, yeah, right, yeah. Okay, then, and then I'll talk. Okay, Jerry. Yeah, we made a great job.
Well, you know what? We hope for you, she will not.
As far as the video stuff here, we had South Coast Village Chiefs result, sex it up every single day. First class, everybody gets one, as you've been all over the place. So you can call those South Coast. And you just miss everything and it's all.